We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Carabel City Commission. It's Thursday, March 7th, 2019. It's 6:00 PM at the Carabel City Hall. And I'll ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and then we'll stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Courtney, Ellen, we're so thankful for that which you've provided for us in this wonderful town of ours and the good people that run it and live here and preserve it and keep it going. We ask you to continue to bless us that we might grow and prosper and that we might accommodate those indeed. And we ask you to be blessed with those who are sick and afflicted. And be with us in our judgment tonight that might we be wise and understanding and arguing with your will. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Praise the nations. The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with great justice for all.
Okay, just to go ahead and remind everyone to all the commissioners and staff and advisory board members and speakers to please speak into the microphone so everyone can hear. And we'll move right forward to address the consent agenda. We have our February 7th, 2019, regular meeting minutes, February 26th, 2019, special meeting minutes, and the attorney's invoices. Has everyone had a chance to review those items?
Yes.
Do we have a motion regarding that?
A motion approved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Have that motion by Commissioner Allen, a second by Commissioner Matthews. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, then, tonight, under public comment, we'll go ahead and move forward with Mr. Allen Richardson with the Organization for Artificial Reef. He's here to ask the city for assistance with a grant application to the FWC to construct a reef out at the St. Teresa Reef site. And he requested to be here this evening on very short notice yesterday afternoon. And we're just putting him under public comment. If that's all right with everyone?
Fine.
Okay. All right. Please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I called a couple weeks ago. But we appreciate-
We didn't talk about it until last evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. What we have to do, our group, Organization for Artificial Reef, if you'll go to the next slide, Courtney, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And we're based out of Tallahassee, but we help local governments such as the city of Carabel, city of St. Mark's, Waukesha County, Franklin County, the city of Appalachia, apply for grants and permits and, you know, things of that nature. We also monitor reefs with our research dive team. And then we actively raise money to build them in addition to grants. These older reefs here from in Franklin County, you can see the map. It's kind of hard to read, but the latest one we did was St. Teresa Reef. That's in the very top of the mapping area. That's where we put Prices Point. That's about 1.7 miles south of Dog Island Reef. And then the last other one, if you'll get to the next slide, Courtney, the, this is a list of all the reefs. And you can see the ones are the years that are not active. But we have two active permits through the Corps of Engineers that they're good for 10 years. So the St. Teresa Reef site is the one we're going to apply for a grant for. We applied last year and we missed that grant by two points. And we're not going to do that this year. We're going to, we're going to get this one. If you can see the map here, this is where it's located. Now, all the city has to do as far as this grant application, all that's required is that for you guys to advertise the, and this is in case we get it. Now, first, we had to apply for it. This is the timeline of what we're doing here on our permit. We have to apply for the grant first. If we get it, then the FWC gives you guys the grant application. And you have a chance for review and say yes or no. It doesn't cost the city anything. What it costs you for a short period of time is a reimbursement grant. And Courtney's well aware of those. We've done three or four of these down here in the past. And we were awarded, 2016, we won one in 2015. We missed in 2017, 2018. This is the Prices Point Reef that we deployed in 2016. And that was using private funds. That's the one that we're going to apply, the grant. If we get it, it's going to go in the same site. And that was the cross that we put down. It was a 40 by 20-foot cross that we deployed. It was a $60,000 project. And this is another match on where it's located. It's due south of St. Teresa in southeast Atlanta, up in Carabel. But it's been pretty popular so far. We're seeing grouper, snapper, even at 35 feet on it, which is a pretty productive reef area. And go to the next one. Yeah, here's our, this is our grant process that we're going to be doing. We have to have the, we have to have the grant application in by the end of March. And by June, they'll either approve or deny it. And then they'll fund it. And then we have until that 2020 deadline to actually, you know, put the reef in the water. And then this is kind of a diagram of what we're doing. The center there is where the cross is. And we're proposing to build reefs all around the cross just to improve it, enhance it, make it a bigger reef. It's a 40-acre site. And then this is some of the materials we use. We, in addition to the cross, we put these tetrahedons out there. I think we did, trying to remember now, 3, 6, 9, 10, about 15 or 18 of those we put up there the last go around this 2016. And anyway, that's it. We appreciate it. All we're really asking for is for the city, for the city's cost, to be to advertise it. And that's just an ad in the newspaper. So, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all and speak to the audience. Do y'all have any questions about our process?
Does anyone have questions?
Just for my mind, did I understand you to say that this grant is going to be requested by your organization, not by the city?
No, it's by the city. We just help the city prepare it. And that we're, we're asking FWC to grant on behalf of the city of Carabel.
I thought that's what I understood, but I phrased it a different way because I wanted to see, is that going to restrict any of our grant requests in the future, Ms. Courtney? Sometimes when you have one ongoing or approved or in operation, it restricts on future grants or any other grants you may apply for?
We've done it before and we've never had any restriction. And Allen does all of the work. I don't have to do anything.
Thanks.
And we, in the past, we mailed out the letters to the contractors and we assisted with the, you know, vetting of the bids and everything and try to, you know, help out with that. And FWC, it's up to them. They're the ones that approve or deny our grant applications. So we hired, we've been hiring Bill Horn. He's retired from FWC. And Bill has been writing our grants for us. We paid, I should think the last, last one was $800 that we paid him to write the grant. And it helps because this one's over 60 pages long. I wrote one back in, gosh, 2012, I think that we got. And it just about killed me. Because I work, I have a job. This is all volunteer for us. We don't get paid. We're all, you know, volunteers. So paying Bill is worth it for us because, you know, we don't have to do it then. And he knows what to do. He knows the right buttons to push. And like I said, we missed that last one by two points. It about killed me. But we're going to get this one.
I support your project fully. Just want to make sure it's not going to hamstring us in any way.
I understand. The only hiccup with it is it's the reimbursement thing. We had one year that FWC, I don't know what was going on. You remember that year? It took a little while for them to reimburse. Usually, they turn it around within 30 days. But that one took more than 60.
Does the city front the money on that?
Yes, ma'am. It, the city fronts it and then you get reimbursed fully by the, by the state FWC.
And normally, it's 30 days. We did have the one year it took longer, but normally, it's about 30 days.
And this is, since I've been on board, this is the third one I've been on about.
Well, this is the last, since you've been mayor, the last two we didn't get. We got beat out. They had, last year, they had $800,000 available from the state, the state funds this. And they had $800,000 available. And there were $1.6 million in requests. And we lost Mexico Beach, Amar. They lost theirs. And then they funded like Lee County and Palm Beach County and all these big counties. And that's one of our problems is we get points for being a small county. We get five points for that. But those bigger counties, they get 20 points that we can never get because they have, there's five points for the number of fishing licenses, five points for number of vessels, five points for number of charter boat captains and commercial fishing thing. And we can't beat a county like Palm Beach County that has thousands and thousands and thousands of registered anglers.
Yeah, and the numbers, that's correct.
And I've been pushing FWC to change their rule because a lot of the fishermen that come here, they come here from Tallahassee. They come here from, you know, different areas. They come here from Georgia.
Georgia, Alabama.
I mean, if you're basing it just on the county population and the number, because Franklin County is a small county, they don't have that many fishing licenses. But if you were to count all the fishing licenses from everybody coming here, that'd be a game changer. But I can't give a change of-
Or if they would, they would award money per district?
Yes, ma'am.
Or, you know, something like that, or Northwest Region, Central Region.
So that, in a nutshell, that's what hurts us is the bigger counties, they get 20 points right out of the box. And we can never get that amount of points. So for us to score as high as we did really says something because they're already beaten us to start with. We're trying to change that.
Do more reefs mean more fish? In other words, you have more habitat?
We're seeing habitat on the reefs. Well, Billy's Barge, that was a privately funded program with Bill Michael and I. And we worked on that one. It was to honor one of our board members who passed away. His family raised money. And then we had other funding sources, which was CCA funded part of it. And that was a 100-foot-long barge that we sank in Carabel, 10-mile reef. That's 10 miles south of Dog. And within a couple of weeks, we already had grouper on it. I mean, and there's snapper all over. We fished it over December and we're catching legal snapper. Of course, we had to throw them back. But, oh yeah, there's hard endangered snapper. But, but yeah, there's a lot of recruitment out there on that. And the flounder, too, move offshore as well this time of year. So they're producing. And we didn't have any damage, to speak of, from Michael. We're going to dive Prices Point. We're going to dive this weekend at 10 to 15 mile. Our land's at two to three-foot seas now. We ain't going to do that. But we'll probably go next weekend because we don't know what Michael did to it. Mexico Beach had a lot of damage. They've moved some of their modules. One of them had moved a half a mile. They had to tow boat it there. It stood, it was land on the side and the storm stood it upright. And covered some tree stumps that were there. They said they were 15,000 years old or something. The sand uncovered it. And it moved a lot of the modules. The Bell Shoals, what they call it, that's the one that's at 24 feet. That's where they had the most damage. The deeper stuff, they didn't have as much damage. But Amar had, they got hit hard, real hard.
That's all very interesting.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. And do we need a vote on this then to move forward and allow them to let us apply for, on their behalf, to the FWC? And they do all the work. We just have to front the money for 30 or so days.
Make most to approve.
Okay, then. We have that motion by Commissioner Matthews. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Mickler. It was very interesting and informative. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward now. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, then, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Allen?
I have none.
Oh, wait, I do. I have one.
Okay.
Excited, eh? All right. Tell me what was the name of that meeting we went to yesterday? Historic preservation.
Historic preservation. It's the regional Panhandle Historic Preservation Area.
Okay. We went to that meeting yesterday and looked at the plans to develop our historic resources, which is this area, especially this county, but all up and down the coast of the Panhandle is involved in this. And it has to do with development, bringing tourists down here, which bring their money. And they, sometimes they leave it. And so that's what it's all about. They had a real great meeting that invited people that are very much concerned about what's going on down there.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
He needs to ask for a letter of support. I'll do it when he gets some.
We need a letter of support.
We'll get you some more information on that. And Commissioner Matthews?
I could thank you something. I'm going to let her out.
All right. No, you will. There's no doubt. Okay. Commissioner Walton?
I have nothing.
Okay. And Commissioner Melander?
I have nothing.
All right. And I have something, but I'm going to try to be quick. It's a short one this time. On February 26th, I participated in the, and I believe Mr. Russell will talk about it, the Keos addition pre-construction kickoff meeting with Russell, for Courtney, Kyle, and Dixie Kating representative, the manager of that project reported that the actual site work's going to be, begin the second week in March, depending upon how soon they can get the surveyors out to perform the site survey. On 27th, 7th, I attended a meeting with Courtney and Mr. Tim Sullivan and the Kimley Horn engineers to review the progress of the airport master plan. At the end of that meeting, I asked Zach Duveau, the engineer, if he could complete a Triumph application to request funding for construction of new hangars and a small terminal with parking as shown on the airport master plan. And Courtney's going to follow up on the progress of that application. And then later, on the 27th, I attended the second legislative delegation meeting within one month where I, for the second time, presented the city's request for legislative assistance to fund the water line expansion in the Lyce House subdivision area. And the request is, amount is 630. I've been watching for that House bill to see if it will post, and I cannot see it. I see Appalachia Cola has four House bills posted. But I think they were able to get someone up there to lobby to get another representative to sponsor their bills. You all know with Mr. Halsey Schirr, who's being reappointed to another assignment by the government, that his district, nine or 10 counties, has no representative. And so everyone that's trying to get a budget request in is having a hard time getting that sponsored by another representative, so. On March 10th, I attended a meeting with Alan Pierce and Michael Schuler in Appalachia with Courtney and Kisho. We reviewed Trump's Triumph offer to provide grants in counties hit by Hurricane Michael for mitigation up to 50% of anticipated loss in ad valorem tax revenues for fiscal year 18, 19. The estimated loss is based on data from the property appraisers office. And each county, Board of County Commissioners will submit a funding application on behalf of all cities and school boards, school board in each county, if there's an anticipated loss. And we await a property value assessment before a decision is made to request funding. And Mr. Pierce thinks that Carabel may not have a loss in ad valorem tax, but we'll, we'll see from the professional report. And then on Tuesday, Mr. Benay Bowes gave me a tour of the old Tom Crumb Fish House on Marine Street. We all know they're doing some demo work there. And he wanted to show off, show off his work to date. The entire wooden structure's been removed. And at the time I was there, they were working on removing the two layers of thick four to six inches cork walls. There was an ancient cork wall up against the brick and then another one. And then they sprayed foam insulation, maybe back in the 80s, and they were taking all of that out. All of that made the big building or that big room an ice freezer. And actually, Mr. Tom Crumb was actually there helping to demo. You know, he's come full circle. And he, it was his place and then he was, he was helping to tear, to tear out the inside. Yeah, he was working on it. And he's, Mr. Bowes told me that he's working on having the vessels removed. He has to notify the vessel owners. I believe he said five times. He sent out three letters. And as soon as he gets all of that, all of that task completed as outlined by the FWC, then he's going to be beginning removal of the boats. And I've been working for quite some time to schedule a maintenance of traffic class training for our streets and roads crew. And I believe one, one of the water and sewer department employees is going to go. We'll know more about that tomorrow. The county employees said they, county said they were going to send five. I'm working with the Appalachia Cola and the Sheriff Department as well. Broad Spectrum, which is now called Faribault Services, are conducting a class later this month. So we'll see if we can finally get, get our folks' maintenance of traffic certified, the streets and roads folks at least. That's all I have. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, then we'll move on to the city attorney's report. Mr. Hartman?
All right, just a couple of items. The first one is in the Grantham litigation. Last month, there was filed a suggestion of death. Dr. Grantham passed away around February 15th of last month. And just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what that means. Where we stand in that case is we're the same place we stood last month was that we had received a default judgment. Because he passed away, that would now become a claim against his estate. And it's, is a known claim to the estate. So they should provide us notice if there is an estate open for Dr. Grantham. And that would then provide us an opportunity to basically negotiate with the estate or litigate with the estate over that claim. It's not required, they're not required to open an estate. Meaning if he does not have a, if he does not open a probate or file an estate proceeding in county court or in certain court over in Bay County, then our claim will expire. We just will not have a claim. There will be nothing to recover against. If his estate, if they do open up an estate, then we would have a claim against any assets in the estate. And I would presume, just the way it works typically, is we would engage with the estate to try and resolve it through supplemental litigation. And it'll be up to the commissioning how they want to handle that. But I'll keep you up to speed as it unfolds.
Okay. So do the commissioners have any questions on this?
So to understand, Dan, we're on hold to see if there's an estate established.
Correct.
For Dr. Grantham's.
Correct.
Okay, then, if, if, if there's no, if the estate is not open for a claim, then can the city file a lien? I mean, I don't understand how someone can owe money and just not pay. I know if I was passed away in a nursing home, old hospital bills, they would be coming after my estate.
They would come after your estate. And so it matters what's in the estate.
Okay.
So, and certainly, everybody can ask me all the question, you know, questions. But as a lawyer, right, not as a city attorney, but as a private lawyer, I do estate planning for people and this and that. So some people have assets that will pass through their estate. They have to open an estate in court in order to change title. Basically, when you're deceased, you can't hold title to property that you would get a lien against, right? The title by operation of law or through the probate proceedings is basically re-titled into the name of the estate temporarily and then typically dispersed to beneficiaries. But creditors get to make claims on those assets in the estate. I can go on and on, but if, if, for instance, a real estate asset, for instance, it was husband or wife. If the husband or wife died and the other one survived, the property would, by operation of law, transfer to the surviving spouse. If there was a creditor of the person who died, say the husband died, a creditor of the husband would have no claim on that property because it moved into the name of the wife when they died. And that would pass outside the estate. It wouldn't pass through the estate. It wouldn't be part of the estate. So we wouldn't, as a creditor, be able to go out, we wouldn't get a lien against that asset because it passed outside the estate. If some, again, if something passes through the estate, then we would have a claim against it. And so we're basically, yes, on hold until we find out whether or not there is, I won't say an entity, but if the estate, if, whether there's an estate open, if there is, then our claim would be against that estate. But there is no, basically such thing as a claim against, something's passed away.
And you say it is, it is known that there is a claim right now.
Yeah. What that means, why I mention that, is what you're supposed to do, what you have to do by statute and rule is when you owe, if there is, an estate is open, they have to advertise. And they have to advertise in the local paper, local circulation, which would probably be over in Bay County, if that's his county residence at the time of death, which I'm assuming it was. They're going to issue a notice to creditors in Bay County. And of course, we don't get the Bay County Journal or whatever paper it is. So we may not necessarily find out exactly when that notice is filed. Obviously, anybody can, I can try and stay on top of it, but you literally have to look at every, I don't know how often it comes out, issues and try to watch for that notice. However, there's an exception when you have a known creditor. Like, the common tactic is to advertise in some little nothing paper and try to slip, slip by. But if it's a known creditor and you don't provide them actual notice, meaning not in the paper, not advertise or construct a notice, but give them, you have to send them actual notice. Otherwise, our claim would survive and go against any beneficiaries of the estate, so children, wives, anything like that. So you can't, you can't sneak or you can't go around creditors by claiming you didn't know they were there.
Well, do we need to send them notice or have?
They have notice because they've been served and there's ongoing litigation. So you don't get much more notice than that.
All right. Okay. And this advertisement that they have to advertise, if they open the estate, where is this going to be, a little tiny advertisement in the?
Yep. Yep. In the legal advertisement section of the paper. And sometimes it's not even the main paper. It's any paper that accepts legal advertisements in that county.
Okay. All right.
General circulation.
Yep.
Do you all have any other questions? Okay. All right.
The next thing is, we have, as was voted at the last meeting, a finalized lease agreement with Little Customs Homes. And I've talked to them a number of times. They anticipate getting us proof of insurance and the deposit and then starting to get set up in the space and open, get moving on April 15th is the effective date. And I talked to Mr. Massimo as well as Mr. Martin, or Ben Bruch at Martin Marine. They, they're, Little Customs Homes folks are coming down next week to meet with him to kind of work through use of the space, the, you know, good neighbors there. And my understanding is that they will be contacting him in court. Little Customs Homes is going to contact Mr. Ben Bruch right tomorrow and set that meeting up and get moving on that. And I met with Mr. Ben Bruch today with his consultant and just talked about what his concerns were and options and things like that, so. But I emphasize that we want them to work it out, that the city's role, we're the last resort. If they just get at loggerheads, then the city's landlord will make decisions, but probably ones that everybody will not be happy with, on use of the space.
Do, does anyone have questions on, on this one? Okay, well, I want to thank you for meeting with Mr. Ben Bruch and explaining so that he understands that he's having a little bit of a difficult time. But then, we also, before they, they take possession, we need to, we need to have the security deposit in hand. Has anything like that, have they, nothing like that strings to tie?
No, they're, they're, they understand crystal clear that before they, I'd say, step foot in the building, but do anything as far as bringing equipment down, or doing any sort of operation or anything in that building, they need to get us the security deposit and proof of insurance.
Yes. And then, I suggest that we take photos. Maybe sometime this week, we can go out there and get photos of the, you know, just of the inside and outside, and just have the, you know, condition of the building. Anything else, sir?
That should do it. I did have, well, I think, there was the one other item on the airport, like I said, I'll come on.
Yes, yes. I think under court needs report.
Got it.
Best I remember. Okay. All right, then, here we go, with the city administrator report.
On Tuesday, I met with Elise Fisher with the ARPC, and she's handling our Target Resilience Grant that we have with the EP. You guys may have remember, Richard Fetchet came down and he talked to us about these grants. Well, Richard's no longer with the ARPC, so Elise has taken over. What, what we're required to do is to have two seminars, a public seminar, and a seminar for staff and city commissioners. And so they want to do those sometime the week of April the 8th through the 12th, or April the 22nd through 23rd. Is there a time that you guys would prefer to have that, one day? Probably got two-hour seminar for, for the staff and commission. It's the lead of April, the 8th through the 12th, or the 22nd and 23rd.
I'm okay with any of those days, except the 10th of April.
I have to April 11. And the 10th of April, we all, that's an HR committee day.
And it would probably be afternoon, because we'll, we'll be having a public meeting later that day, so we'll schedule them all the same day. So it's gonna be probably from 1:00 to 2:00, or 1:00 to 3:00, or 2:00 to 4:00, or something like that. But it will be an afternoon meeting, so we can schedule a public meeting afterwards.
Well, if the mayor's out the 10th, I'm out the 9th, you have the 8th, the 11th, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th.
How do you agree on any of those days?
I thought you said just the 22nd through the 23rd.
She says the week of April 8th through the 12th, or April 22nd and 23rd.
Or 22nd.
Uh-huh. So 8th, 9th, 11th, 12th, 22nd, and 23rd. And it's just a workshop. Mr. Hartman doesn't want to.
Just a seminar, they'll give a presentation, have some maps out, they'll explain sea level rise over the next 10, 20, 30 years, and how much, you know, whether they have a one-foot rise, two-foot rise, three-foot rise.
I would suggest the 8th in the afternoon.
Okay, that's fine with me.
I like that.
Okay. Can we have a motion for that workshop on the 8th in the afternoon?
Make a motion that we have a workshop on April 8th, Sunday 19th in the afternoon, here at City Hall.
What time?
1:30.
Or Courtney, or we, do we have to have the time? I think.
Yeah, let me get with the, originally, she said it was gonna be a four-hour workshop, but then she could reduce that down. She'll cut the field trip out and reduce that down. So we're gonna ask her to reduce it, since city staff is having to take time to come here. That's our chief of police, and everybody's gonna have to sit in with this. So I'll get with her on the time, because then we'll kind of schedule it, where we do that one and get right into a public workshop afternoon.
And if we've got time, we can notice it, you know, it's a month out. So we have a, that motion then for the April the 8th in the afternoon by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Allen, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay, and then, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Last month, I submitted the Kelly Horn pavement assessment, and the Carvel Aviation Board's recommendation to recovery logistics and to Duke Energy. I had a phone call with Mr. Collins with Duke Energy, Danny Collins with Duke Energy. He, he recognizes that there was damages done to the airport. He don't necessarily agree with Kelly Horn's estimate of the repairs. What he's asked is for me to get them two estimates, give them back to him, and they are willing to pay for the repairs at the airport. You know, he said if we, if we don't get him two estimates, then they'll just go with who they, they would like to come out and fix it. And we're gonna ask for Dixie paving, because they're already here doing keyholes. We may save some mobilization fees. More Florida asphalt and CW Roberts. So we're just gonna go ahead and get three quotes and send him the three quotes. They definitely said they want to take care of it. They want to make it right. So, you know, no, no friction there.
Okay, so that's promising, and I'm glad we went ahead with Mr. Hartman's and the Aviation Advisory Board's recommendation to, to go ahead and, and submit that. I appreciate that. And you're, you're asking for the third one, CW Roberts, because that's who Mr. Collins is.
That's who they said they would use anyway. And also, once we submitted that, and we submitted the past two invoices that were outstanding, Recovery Logistics sent an email right back, gave me a person to forward these to, and they've been working with me on those.
And so we discussed that they would propose they'd need some specifications, and those are outlined in the pavement, Kelly Horn assessment. And Tim is working with Zach to clean out those specifications in, in a report that can be used for the submitting of bids, the quotes.
As the mayor stated earlier, on February 27th, we met with Zach Devaux with Kelly Horn to review the progress on the airport master plan and layout plan. And during this meeting, we talked to Zach about preparing a tri-imp application to request funding for the construction of the new hang, of a new hangar with four stalls and a small terminal with parking, as it's shown in the master plan. And we directed Zach to give us an estimate to complete a two-page pre-application and then executive summary. So he hasn't got back with me a quote on the pre-application. The application's really extensive and it's really long, and they require you to have a pre-application first. So what we want to do is send out a pre-application and see if we get a good feel on it. And if they agree, you know, if they approve our pre-application, then we can move forward with submitting the application for that. We will need letters of support to submit with that application package. Next thing is, you know, we've had some hangar trouble out there with our new hangar for the construction project. On February 11th, Jason White Contractors cut the wiring for the runway, runway lights again. When I talked to Kathy Construction, he said, he told the Jason White Contractors that they would be glad to unbury the wires so Ernie Newberry could make the needed repairs. When Ernie called Jason White, they said it's not their problem. So they, it didn't get fixed. Tim's issued a note on out at the airport. It was issued off February the 13th. It was renewed again on March 5th, and a note that the runway lights are out. The bid forms and plans state that it was contractor's responsibility to relocate. Are potentially conflicting utilities out of the way of construction. This is the second time in the past that the airport has been without any runway lights for an extended period of time. And, you know, they, they can't use, it can't be used from sunset to sunrise because there's no, no lights out there. FDOT and FAA will allow for a reasonable amount of time to make any necessary repairs, but it needs to be, it needs to be repaired. So this has been three and a half weeks now, and it hasn't been repaired. And Kathy Construction has not sent a representative over to the site. They had a site supervisor on the job when the construction began, but about halfway through, I think we're about halfway through the job, he, he was let go, and he hasn't been back, and they haven't had a full project in its own spot since then. The hangar shell was constructed in March of 18, and storm water has leaked in the back of the building because the landscape was not, was not done according to plans. The trench drain was built last month. It's, it's stopped up, so it doesn't appear to be draining properly. There's still no power to the hangar. The insulation on the inside's wet. The, the unpainted metal beams are rusted because they're exposed. It's starting to mildew and mold. The roof and the gutters were damaged during Hurricane Michael. So we have lots of problems out there. And, you know, we keep asking them to come out and fix them, and they, they haven't came. They were supposed to have already been out here. They were supposed to have been here last week, and it still, still isn't done. There's been several meetings out there with, with Dan and the airport advisory members and the mayor, and FDOT, and Jason White, and Brian Kathy, and they've all agreed on several occasions to write, say to do is to abide by the plans. So basically, we have a problem out there, and we need to, we need to get this fixed.
Well, I, I can say that the contract was signed on July 15th, 2017, almost, you know, it's a year and a half, and, and they had, they had 254 days to complete the project. And it was scheduled to be completed March the 12th, 2018, which is a month, basically, next week. They, I've never seen a site supervisor out there. I understand they had a site supervisor the first month out there. And, I mean, now, I was out there the day they started putting in the trench drain, and the day they broke the, cut the runway wires. And they were, they knew that, that the wires were cut, and they kept installing the drain, and then they were notified that the lights were out, and they still kept installing the drain. Now, the drain system is installed over the top of where the wiring is broken underneath, and honestly, I don't know. They can't bring a backhoe in there and necessarily, if they do, they'll destroy all of the drain system. It's, it's just, it's just terrible. They cut the asphalt. They're supposed to lay an apron out there as well, in front of the hangar, like a driveway apron, but it's a hangar apron for an aircraft, big, coming out into the middle of the runway. And they cut the asphalt for that maybe a month ago, three weeks or a month ago, they haven't returned, because they'll take, they'll mill where they've cut the asphalt, mill that up, and they lay a nice, maybe driveway, a hangar, a apron for the hangar. So now, and I got some numbers from Miranda, back when they cut the wires, back in November, sometime they cut the wires, I can't remember quite when, the city had to pay $7,500 to Ingram Signaling to come back and repair the lights. They, they just wouldn't do it, and we can't leave the lights out forever, over there, the runway lights. The city has paid additional engineering fees for jackup jacks to come out to the site to review and to review hand-drawn plans on how they were gonna revise this and put the French drain in, for $2,700 additional. We've lost a year's worth of anticipated rent, an amount of $5,040. That's, that's about $15,240. Countless hours with Courtney and, and myself and Tim, as volunteer hours out there, trying, trying to get the thing worked out. And Dan was alerted that we were gonna be, the CAAB members and myself are recommending to hire an outside contractor to repair the lights. Once again, it's gonna cost the city money, and a new hire, a new contractor come in and complete the project.
Does, do we not, just a quick question on the lights being cut repetitiously. Do we not have a drawing out there of where those lights are?
No, no, there's, there's no drawing. There, there are, there are drawings, but they're, they're not, the wires aren't where there's, where the drawings here are.
When we started construction out there, we pulled all the plans that we had, we pulled all the construction plans, all the plans that we had on the airport, and it didn't have anything on it.
Does anyone know where the wires are?
We have an idea of where they're at, but exactly where they're at, no.
And they're supposed to call for locale.
So my next question is, has anyone called for locale?
And I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you my experience with this. It happened over on Southeast Avenue C. Same folks were on Southeast Avenue C, working, and they dug up telephone and internet cable over there, broke that. The same folks were working out here in the front, out here, to put in a sewer pit on the new parking area, for to, right out here by the sidewalk. They cut a telephone and internet. And Courtney and I have talked to them on the phone about that, and I don't, you know, what to say. I don't know if I want to say in public what they said.
Well, I, I mean, I think we didn't go beyond that. I just had that question. That's not available. It's done, it's done. My question goes to Dan. Dan, where, from a legal standpoint, where do we stand here? I mean, I heard you mention in a meeting out there, and I know there's been a lot of action or activity, if you will, since I've been on the city on the board on various different projects. But where do we stand with a contractor and, and their neglect of duties, et cetera?
You've got the legal and the practical.
Sure.
And on the legal side, the contract controls. So we have a contract with them, and I'd actually rather not go through it.
Okay.
Certainly, I can talk privately with the commissioners about different issues as they arise. Because now it's a, you know, we've had a number of issues with that building as far as drainage, actual construction of it, and now the, the main focus being that they cut subsurface conditions, that they, that, you know, we have our position, and the mayor, you know, laid it out, as far as what we're complaining of, that they messed up. So on the legal side, the contract's gonna be controlled, and so just kind of, as usual, when you go legal, there's gonna be two, two sides to it, and two different, you know, competing arguments. That they're gonna have an argument, we're gonna have an argument, and that would sort itself out in court. And this one doesn't seem to have an argument. There are contractors that would be arguing back and forth for a year to eighteen months, probably, about it in court. And then, I did talk to Courtney briefly today, and then this issue would come up. And actually, during our conversation, Mr. Kathy called, which you broke loose to take that call, is how much time until they're done with the project, right? And you already mentioned this.
No, he reported that he could have the project finished in three weeks. God said, you, you said you were gonna be here. When are you gonna, you know, when can you be here? And he said it would be three weeks.
Now, does that include repairing the cut line?
He said it could be completed, absolutely completed within three weeks.
That's what he told you today.
That's what he says today.
How many times has he said that?
He's, he's said several times.
Every time we meet, he says three.
I mean, the last time I talked to him.
Why do we keep using these people?
Well, one of them I'm gonna suggest is in another meeting. Sorry.
He, you know, he told me, before the, Jason White would come, he'll, he said he'll come out, he'll do whatever it takes. We called Jason White. Jason White says, it's your problem. We're not gonna, we're not gonna fix it.
But ultimately, Kathy Construction is responsible.
He is responsible.
He's the contractor.
Yes, he is.
And did you mention him about the gutters?
He did, he's on his job.
Remember that? It's hard to remember all this stuff.
I told him that the gutters clocked up, and that the drain wasn't draining.
But the, the gutters were damaged, were damaged.
Yes, he's aware of that. He's aware of that.
Okay, is he gonna manage that, being that he has insurance?
He says he wants.
Okay. If we, if we, now, is there some way that we could get some kind of a side contract with him, for him to be completed here in a certain amount of time?
We're holding retainage on it.
You still got, you got about $80,000 in the grant to complete construction, and he hasn't been paid.
But the building is deteriorating before our eyes there. It's, it's now, I think I've mentioned, no, I did not mention in the public meeting, it has, there's a new leak that developed over these hard rains on Saturday, Sunday and Monday, in the front of it. It has nothing to do on the backside with the gutters. There's a new leak there off the roof.
Like water, rain, something?
No, it's coming out of the roof. One of the aviation, Mr. Burkeworthy told me about that yesterday.
And I would, I do think, because obviously, this afternoon, I know there are repeat issues, but another issue is, right after the meeting, I have no problem kind of running through some of this with you. And I can, yeah, it is complicated based on the contract. It's not, never straightforward. But, you know, obviously, the retainage serves that purpose, that obviously, they don't even pay for the fact that we're, or being behind or anything else. But But again, in my experience, I do a fair amount of this on the private side as well as the local side, but to, there's still a procedure in there, which we sent them a default, a default letter back in November. There's, we still have to go through that procedure. We have to fault them, they get an opportunity to fix it, get it right and all that. So we have that process. If we literally took the position, A, you're basically off the job, far from the job, getting a new contractor, and this is more, you know, both legal and practical, we can end up paying them for the work they've done. I mean, pay them the balance of the retain, we can end up paying twice the amount they worked out there, which is not, it's insult to injury for us.
And so, you don't, this is not a case where you go to their bonding company?
There is no bond.
There is no bond.
But I can see the contractor is not called for. There is no performance bond.
I think between a rock and a hard place, and I would suggest, or my thought is, Courtney, can you have Cathy Construction send you an email stating what he told you verbally by phone today that he'll be finished with the project in three weeks?
I will ask you.
He'll complete it in three weeks?
I will ask him.
And let's give him three weeks. I know that's not what we, none of us want here, but I'm not, I'm not excited about spending a whole bunch of money as we were just alluding to in many different ways. I would love for the project to be finished probably just as much as you guys would, but that's the reason why I said I think between a rock and a hard place. Ask him if he'll submit to you in writing, by email, that he'll have that project completed. And I know Tim and the other folks that's on the board keep an eagle eye on that place out there and that's the reason why I was thinking about that wiring, to where we could have someone that's familiar with the wiring, where the wiring is located and those kind of things, kind of giving those folks some pointers when they're out there working to try to alleviate some wiring being cut and different things. And Tim, I know you guys are working hard and we appreciate that. That's just thoughts. But anyway, that's my suggestion is let's see if he'll submit you an email and try to give him three weeks to get this project done.
I would, that's okay. I mean, if Mr. Hartman is saying that there's no bond and he's saying that it's going to cost a lot of money to claim it to fall or go into litigation, page wise, he needs to send that in writing and he needs to give a list, a bullet point list on exactly what he intends to repair. Is he going to repair the lights? Is Mr. Ernie, Mr. Newberry going to work with him on that?
No.
Who's going to repair the lights? We want to know who's going to repair the lights, number one, and that needs to be done tomorrow, yesterday, last week. And then, is he going to, when's the gutter going to be repaired exactly? Is he going to address these issues that have been named here, the mold and mildew? Is the rust going to be painted, what about insulation that's wet? Exactly what's going to be done? And it's another job for you, but it's...
I'll send you a list.
Just be firm with him.
I will send you a list of all these issues that we have and ask him to put it writing and he is, you want to fix these and do whatever property.
That's a good idea to send, you know, to ask for this request in writing. I've had to ask for this from a residence out here on Northwest Avenue B. We weren't going to do anything move forward in front of their property until they gave consent and writing that they knew what was going on. Mr. Tim?
If we're in the position we're in because of that contract, that's a very poor contract for the city to sign. I mean, we shouldn't be stuck where we're at. That building should have been done a long time ago.
I know.
And if that's what's holding us back, that needs to be revised definitely for the next time.
I don't know who developed that contract that was done, maybe a good, good long time ago, four or five years ago. This is a long, drawn-out grant procedure. The FDOT people are pretty much almost furious. Every time they see Tim, they want to know when the project's finished. When they see me or talk to me, they want to know when is it going to finish? They're ready to close out the grant. You know, it's just been open too long.
The other thing is with the wiring, you know, there are, it's, it's an old, it's an old system, very old system, so things have been patchworked all over. It was up to the construction company to mark those wirings. It can be done. I mean, it's a 4,000-volt system. If it was turned on, it'd be very easy to trace it with those ground radar things. That's how they found the break the last time. So they jumped the gun with the wiring, the Duke Energy wiring is why we're putting in that trench drain and then the couple of times we've had with the runway lights in different positions where they broke it. But it's all the result of them not doing as they were supposed to, marking those wires. And it's doable, even though there isn't any good schematic of it.
Mr. Hartman, do you agree with that strategy?
I agree with the strategy. Sorry, the strategy that you...
Yes.
Yes.
I will send you an email.
Okay, we have three of the advisory board members here now, Commissioner Baldwin, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Bryan. We appreciate y'all being here.
And Mayor, if both yourself and maybe the advisory board folks have just a minute after the meeting, we can run through the pickle we're in as far as that, so they understand.
Okay, so they understand the contract?
Exactly.
Okay, that'd be very good.
That is all I have.
All right. Do y'all have any further questions for Ms. Courtney? Okay, well, we thank you, Courtney, and thank you for following up on that. Then, Ms. Keisha.
I applied, I applied for a scholarship to get my CEU's, continuing education for my floodplain manager's license, so I'll be attending that training the last week of March.
Okay, did you get it?
Yes. It was a partial scholarship because of the hurricane. There were so many applicants, but it was $500.
Well, that's good.
That is a big cost.
Anything's better than nothing. Do y'all have questions for Keisha? Okay, then, Mr. Large, Anovia.
Okay, going through our projects on Avenue B. That project is progressing at a pace that we'll see that finished with the completion date of May 15th, 2019. Contractor confirmed that as of this past Tuesday.
May 15th?
May 15th. For final completion, May 15th. On the Kios Edition, we did have the pre-construction meeting with contractor, which went well. They will be beginning construction next week and we have final completion on that scheduled for 28th June. On City Hall, we still have remaining bunch item lists, similar to the items that we discussed previously, the asphalt survey, the pipe video. I do know that they are working on getting a different pipe video than what they sent us before, which was not acceptable. And thirdly, the executing of the guarantee agreement. That's been provided to them for execution. We did release half of the retainage amount, so we're still withholding the 5%. Also, I want to mention that we, we did get a quote finally on the window repair and sent that to Courtney, which she went ahead and approved, so we've authorized them to get that worked out. Okay, I'll skip, I'll skip down to Summer Camp Utility Feasibility Study Task Order. I believe you've been provided with that part of your package. I just wanted to point out a couple items on that report. If you look at number, number four on the first page of the task order, just wanted to point out to everyone that this utility operates as St. James Island Utility Company and they file annual reports with the Public Service Commission. According to those reports, the utility has consistently reported annual losses. The most recent report from 2017 had a loss of $308,000. However, we look back in previous years, 2014 and 2015, and they were in excess of $800,000 losses, annual losses. Also wanted to mention number six, that we understand that the city's interest and objective is to consider ownership of St. James Island Utility Facilities under financial conditions, which will not adversely affect the city of Caravelle and its citizens. On the second page, we go through some of the scope of work items there. Number three describes the feasibility study related to potential phases of ownership transition, an initial phase, which may include connection to the city system, and then the subsequent phases would occur at certain build-out milestones of the development, which made sense for the city to take over those facilities. And then lastly, you know, we would develop recommendations to the city. I would like to express that our approach coming up with this task order, you know, we see this as a very important study. In fact, it's, I think it's critical that it be done correctly. We don't have all the answers right now, but we understand the objective and the point of this task order is to make sure that we put in the time and effort to make sure it's a good evaluation and that we have a solid recommendation for the city of Caravelle. And at the conclusion of this study, it's our intention that the city has a clear path moving forward as it relates to ownership transition. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I read your task order, good report, and I agree, concur with your report and what you verbally just stated. I'll restate something I've already said about this. I don't see anyone from Summer Camp here tonight.
It wasn't, it's not on the agenda as an item, so...
Yes, that's correct. I understood him to say they would be here, but anyway. And I'm speaking to the other board members. I'll voice what I said at the last meeting. I'm interested in the proposal, but I'm also interested in Summer Camp paying for this study. They're the ones that's requesting and they're the ones that seem to benefit the most. And I see some of the preliminary by the PSC, the losses that are in there and some of the other things that we've talked about, I'm interested in, not the city of Caravelle paying this $15,000 for your services, but St. Joe, or not St. Joe, Summer Camp. So folks, that's how I feel.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
We shouldn't be paying $15,000 when it's, they came to us.
I understand. We didn't solicit, and I understand. We, and we need to keep in mind too, that they're suffering extreme losses over there, year after year after year, and we know that. And then it's evidenced by their annual reports. So if we were to get involved, there's no, there's, and we said it at the last meeting, there's no profit to be made, but we're considering it for the future growth to, for our Water and Sewer Department to operate as a regional facilitator of Water and Sewer. So we know we want to provide that opportunity, but it is quite a lot for them to come here and ask on this further moment. So do all of you agree with that?
I agree with that, yes.
I feel that they're only one house and they'll pay for the hookup. I'll welcome that one house online because it's huge, but they pay. St. Joe's got plenty of money. They use it as a sack fry it all.
Okay. Now, I have a question to ask Mr. Large. How long will this study be effective? If you do this feasibility study, how long will it be good?
That's a great question. The initial phase, I think, would be effective. I think, I think it's reasonable to say that would be effective within the next two to three, maybe even five years. The subsequent phases would be based on projections, so those would need to be updated at certain points.
I agree.
Okay, so do we want to give Ms. Courtney some direction, make a motion for some direction on this? Do we want Mr. Curtis to come back and see us or just have Courtney communicate with him for now? Maybe he wants to ask for a spot on the agenda again?
I think it's time for her to communicate to us.
Charlie, do you have input on this at this point?
I know, but I believe that with the direct of Courtney to get back to them with that, I think that would be the way to go right now.
With the message from the commission?
And then they can decide what they want to do.
So we, you just want me to ask him to pay for the study or you want to pay for the whole project?
The whole process.
Actually, Russell was in, just a commitment, a commitment probably in writing from them to reimburse us for the cost of the study. That way, there's no, they're not employing our engineer.
Once, once we know what the study says, then we would know better if we want to, if we can take it on or if they, you know, if they want to afford to hook up, you know, we'll just, we'll just understand better how we can move forward once the study is complete.
Well, I make a motion that we direct Courtney to get in touch with the Summer Camp representative, Mr. Curtis, and advise him of the task order that Anovia has presented and that we're still interested in moving forward. And in that respect, if they are on board to pay for this task order, for the study, for us to continue proceedings and continue investigating the possibility of taking over that facility, they can, we wish, I mean, we would request that they pay for the, pay the task order to Anovia.
Okay, so that's back to me. Do you want to put that in writing? You can go back to the video.
Let me get this straight there. We're going to direct Courtney to ask Mr. Curtis to reimburse us for it because if they paid him directly, he would be their employer.
Correct.
To give a mandate in writing to reimburse for cost of the study and for us to continue to consider and investigate moving forward.
For us to continue negotiations with them and consider, yeah.
Rick said he was going to get the video, try to get the video posted quicker this time, within the next couple of days, so you can get that in writing if you need it.
Anybody in the public who wants to read a copy of this, welcome to it.
Yeah.
You might need to read it.
Okay, so we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Walden. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right. Mr. Large, do you have anything else for us?
No, that was it.
Do y'all have questions for Mr. Large?
Thank you, Russell.
Charlie, do you have anything for us?
No, pretty good.
Okay, all right. We thank you for coming tonight, sir. All right, then we'll move on to advisory board reports, waterfront partnership.
Thank you very much. I think you all received a copy of my report and the notice that we have decided to host, hosting is the right, we're organizing a river cleanup for Caravelle on April 6th. We usually do this every year in anticipation of the Riverfront Festival, but we particularly need to do it this year because of the storm debris and different things that are still around the river. We use the term river very broadly, so if we can get things that are up in the neighborhoods as well, that works out. We're very happy to do that. So we'd all want to invite you to all come down and participate on Saturday morning, April 6th, between 8:30 and 11:30, and we will be looking forward to seeing you there. We are in the process, continues to activate the grant for renovations of all City Hall and we filed for permits. And Courtney, I don't really know, how long does it usually take to get permits? That was last week.
He's already got the permit.
The permit is back.
For Mr. Godfrey?
Mr. Godfrey got the permit. I know the contractor signs the permits and we're picking out paint colors, so we're, if you want to consult with us on paint colors, come on in. if you want to consult with us on paint colors, come on in. We got samples and put it up on the wall to see what they look like. And any of you want to look at the paint samples, just stop by, and we'd be glad to show you what we're thinking. We also have been reviewing the various, the state's starting their next cycle of grants, starting this, really in April, but we've been looking into those, finding out. And I was researching whether or not we could get another phase of funding to put in the wheelchair lift for the building. We're required to have the wheelchair lift, but because of ADA, according to the state, but they won't pay for it with historic preservation funds because it wasn't original to the building. Now, I have a little confusion about that, I think. If they're telling you you have to do it, but they don't consider an allowable cost, I kind of, anyway. I'm working on that, but I, it didn't make a lot of sense to me. But we probably, most likely, will find a way to move forward with that by next month, at which point we'll come back with either a request for a resolution, if it's, if the city's applying for it, it'd be a resolution. If the Caravelle Historical Society is applying for it, then we need a letter of support, but I just, I need to find out what it is before I ask you for one of those things. So, I anticipate that would be at your meeting in April. You have any questions about that? It's a little confusing. You know, our interest is to continue to finish the full renovation of the building and getting to justice building, and to get that completely up to date and meeting all the requirements and all that. And I just thought we could write another, it's going to be about $50,000, and I thought, well, we could just write another phase and do that, but that's not, the answer's no, so there we go.
Tim, are there any other grants for bringing civic government buildings into ADA compliance?
I'm actually, I'm looking into that. We recently found out that there's some funding through, like, the National Park Service for weird things, so maybe weird excessive, well, weird things is not the right term, for accessibility items for buildings that are, have public use. So, it could be, we can find an angle anywhere there, but I keep asking, and eventually we'll find one. Or we'll get a private foundation to pay for, which is a little harder, but we can do that. We, within the next week or so, we should have the two videos on YouTube for the shipwreck, the one about the shipwreck from the talk that we had recently, and the second one is, was my introductory piece about the history of Caravelle and the boom time that we did as part of that talk. So, we ended up, we'll end up with two videos about Caravelle, and we'll be able to make those available on Facebook, and, well, Facebook can let people know about it, but it'll be on YouTube, so you can go and look at it, or refer people to it, or whatever. And I want to thank especially the fire department for helping us this past week to get our flag flying again. It got taken out by Michael, and we could not get it done, and they came and brought the truck over. It took them about five minutes to drop that cord down in that hole, in the pulley, but it really was, and then our local engineering wizard, Dr. Keith Lucas, actually did a real fancy way to do it, so it won't come loose again, so. A very interesting situation there. And the only other thing is, you all got, on your guests, the little poster of the, of our gopher, talking about the culture crawl on the 23rd. And so, this year, all the people that participated in the culture crawl will get a little prize, and that will either be a magnet of the world's smallest police station, or a little magnet of this turtle that says, "I go for Caravelle." So, it's kind of a play on, "I go for art, I go," this is a gopher turtle, in case people, sometimes those aren't clear that it was a gopher, but it is. So, we've got good musics already lined up, we've got drumming circles lined up, we've got characters walking the streets. It should be a fun day in Caravelle, and it's been the most economically positive day for, for the last three years that we've done it. The businesses say it's their best day all year long, including Christmas. So, we're going to do that again this year, so pray for good weather. And that's all I have.
Okay, well, we thank you, thank you.
You have a question, Ben?
Yes, ma'am. And my question may be off-base, because I'm not familiar with what I'm about to ask here, about a broadband grant. Is that what you and Mr. Cal attended?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot to take care of that.
Maybe Commissioner Bolt can speak to it. It was mentioned at the county commission meeting, and I missed that. I was tied up yesterday, and I missed that part of it.
It's a, it's a National Park Service has a designation that they can make for a portion of the state, calling it a historic preservation area. It's got a better name than that, but that's basically what it is. And in this case, the folks at the Florida Public Archaeology Network and University of West Florida and a bunch of other folks have been working with all the counties in the Panhandle, so they're calling it the Panhandle Maritime Historical District, and that we would be Franklin and Waukulla County are the easternmost end of that. And so, it, at this point, all they need from any entity that's interested, supportive, or a potential partner about historical, historical and maritime heritage in this area, they need a letter of support. So, they're asking each city commission, each county commission, all the museums, the parks, the state parks, the national parks, the whole bit, to participate in that. So, it's one of these processes that takes like three years, and they're in the middle of, they're in the feasibility study. And so, in order to make it be a feasible project, they have to get so many letters of support. And this was their week to come to Franklin County, and I understand from Mr. Bolt that the county passed a letter of support to support that, and also the City of Aplaccola passed a letter of support. And so, we just really found out about it yesterday. So, it wasn't time for me to prepare some sort of draft, but if you are generally responsive to that, we could send you out a correspondence about what's, what it's about and their documentation.
This is for 5G, right?
Yes, I'm correct.
And, yes, I think we want to have that, and I understand from Mr. Watson that he's going to have a little, a meeting to explain it in a couple of weeks to explain it to us all. So, good.
That's what he said to me tonight, that I thought he was going to tie in with some of Ms. Tamra's, is reason why I asked the question.
But will Ms. Tamra draft a letter of support if she wants to? That would be good.
I was not well-informed enough to know how it would tie in with her.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know either, but he, but Mr. Watson wanted to know from me, who is our IT person?
Yes.
That's definitely, I would not be me. I'm not your man person, your money person, or your IT person.
But, yes, I agree with the letter of support whenever the time comes, you know.
So, if we'll get that put together. I think it can only go to our good, I mean, in that it would put us on another map where people travel around the country and say, "Let's visit all of these historic places along the, around here," so.
Thank you, Ms. Tamra.
It'll be us, thank you.
And then we pushed pretty hard on the county, too.
Did you all have any other questions for Tamra before she leaves, or the, okay. And Commissioner Bolt? Thank you, Tam, I appreciate it. Commissioner Bolt?
Just a, thank you. The county commission strongly supports this. I pushed very strongly about the, really, the economic moves, that 5G technology could happen and have in our community. Two weeks ago, I was talking to a vendor who offers a special application for iPhones so that indigent people receiving food stamps and other benefits can balance out their budget, and it works superior on 5G technology. And many indigent people, believe it or not, have iPhones, a lot. So, putting all that together looks very possible and very plausible. And on Tuesday, the 19th of this month, let's see, Eric Watkins is going to be having a meeting of the stakeholders that are purveying this at the courthouse.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir, for your comment. All right, then, Economic Development Council, there is no report tonight. Okay, then, the Caravelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Good evening, everybody. Joe, give the report.
Yeah.
Just one thing I want to bring up, the FPT project resolution, there'll be another one tonight. This would probably be about the third one that we've done. The FDOT has been changing their processes so that these job descriptions, these JPAs are exactly for what the project money is going to. They were, in the past, it was pretty loose. We've changed a lot of the money around, but in the future, they're just not going to allow that. They're under the pressure from the legislature to make sure that the money that's granted to them is put to work the way it's supposed to be put to work, with the agreement is. So, that's just to clear up that lettering on that and to include the inspection, for the engineers' inspection, so that the project like the hangar won't happen again, so that'll be written into all the projects in the future. So, they'll have, we'll have Kim Lee-Hun oversight step by step through these projects. The other thing is that we control, Commissioner Bolt, they've gotten with Eric Lovstrand from the county extension office. We have a sprayer out there, we've got the, we've got the tools, we've sprayed out there, and it just didn't stop anything from growing. So, Mr. Lovstrand spent a lot of time researching it, talked with Aplaccola Airport, having the same problems, and he's come up with a couple of different herbicides we can use and the method of applying it, so we're going to be hopefully doing that in the next month or so. Any other questions?
Okay, I just wanted to mention your tree removal behind the hangars on the forest, forest surface land. A lot of the commissioners may not realize that trees blew from the forest land onto the, onto the hangars, and they're damaged, and Courtney's working on one, and we just discussed the other one, how is that going to be? The gutters are jam-packed full with debris, and Courtney's contacted, got top-notch, now they're going to come and clean out their, those...
Should be tomorrow.
Okay, good. And that needs to be, I mean, the trees hang over the two hangars, so we need to make sure those hang, those gutters are kept clean, I don't know, twice a year or more?
At least, because it's been about a year, I think, since they were, maybe not even that, since they were cleaned last time, and it's just as full now as it was. So, six months is minimum, yeah.
It got so bad that it leaked inside, it rained inside, the term, the rain was coming into the, not the terminal, the hangar, because the gutters were so full, there was nowhere for the order to go. So, I've been in touch with Clint Davis to see about having some mitigation of some of the trees that are threatening the hangars, and he's having a forester take a look to see if there's any at-risk trees out there. He hasn't followed up with me, but, you know, we want to try to keep that from happening again, if possible, so.
Yeah, they, they cleared out a good amount of trees, but there's still a lot that are threatening, but they're aware of it, and they've been good neighbors, so.
Yes. Glad to have them, they watch after the airport and help people get in when they can't, when folks need to get in, so. Do you all have questions for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Do we want to move forward? Oh, excuse me, excuse me, one more report here. The Caravelle, Caravelle HR Committee, Mr. Tom Magnin.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. Let's have a brief report. Even Resource Committee met twice in the month of February. I just want to mention who's on that committee, for maybe some people don't know, it's Tony, and Courtney, and Charlie, Chief Gary, and Dustin from Streets and Roads have been, has been on the, at both of those meetings in February, so the city is well-represented on that committee. We've been working almost exclusively on the evaluation form for employees. We've made progress, we've revised it twice, the, the form that we're working on, which is kind of a, made up of a collection of various forms that we're using, and the committee studied and examined, trying to take the best out of each, each evaluation form. We'll have another similar session on our next meeting, which will be in March of '17, and with some revisions that we, we made during the last meeting, so, you know, I think the committee is really being very, very studious about, about what goes into that evaluation form, and working through some, some areas that we always don't always agree on, of course, there's different points of view about, about things in that committee, as any committee would have, and, but we're good at working through them and trying to resolve them, and I think that hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have something that we can present. And that's not a promise, because it's still a work in progress, and if you look at your report that I submitted, you'll see that everything is pretty much documented in that report about what we're working on, you know, so. And we also want to make a recommendation on, on how the evaluation process will, will happen, and we have a couple of ideas on that, so. So, it's just a matter of keeping at it and trying to come up with the best form we possibly can, and that's about all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Do you all have questions for Mr. Magnin, comments?
Questions, but thank you again for your hard work.
Well, I am going to say thank you to me and everybody else on that committee. It's really a pleasure to work on that committee and, and to work through the issues that we come across, and there are issues, but I think everybody's head is in the right place, and just trying to get something that's fair and equitable, and it's going to work to, to make the city a better place to work in, so.
Well, we thank you. Yes, a meeting two, two times a month, that's quite the schedule.
We'll work, we'll meet this in March on the 11th, which is a Monday at 1:30, and then again on March 27th, Wednesday at 10 o'clock, and that's our two scheduled meetings for this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Now, we're going to move into public hearing. We've got two ordinances, two resolutions, and two items, new, one under new business, one under old business. Do we want to take a quick recess?
No.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Walden does.
I'm going to drink this whole bottle of water.
That's a prerogative.
Just got to get it.
Well, then, we're going to go five minutes. Can we go in five minutes? All right. Your microphone's off, so. I have your readings here. Okay, I'm going to call back to order our meeting here on March 7, 19, at the Caravelle City Hall, and we have the public hearings portion of our meeting, and we have the ordinance 469, we have the second reading for that, Mr. Hartman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Caravelle, Florida, providing for the amendment of section 30-2 of Article 1 of the Charter of the City of Caravelle, Florida, changing the year and month of election for the mayor and city commissioners from September of each odd number of years. each odd number of years to November of each even-numbered year, providing for extension of the terms of city commissioners in order to make an orderly transition, providing for the repeal of any ordinance or parts therefrom in conflict herewith, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. And this is the ordinance, this is the second read, so this is adoption time of us bringing our elections in line with national, state, and local elections, and administratively letting the elections office handle the administration of our elections, and again, primarily based on the cost savings that the city will realize from doing that.
Okay.
And hope for additional turnout, voter turnout.
Yes, additional voter turnout on even years. So we've discussed this at six meetings, and we've had a workshop, had the supervisor, Franklin County Supervisor of Elections come over and talk to us and make recommendations. Is there any further discussion? Do you have any other comments, questions? Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion or comments from the public this evening, or staff? All right, then, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt.
Okay.
As read.
I got the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melander to adopt this ordinance 469 as read. We have that motion seconded by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. And then this ordinance, I requested the signature lines for all the commission members to, to be on there, because this is a change in the charter, so I would like that. Okay, we all agreed that today. Not that everyone has to sign it if they don't want to, but if they would like to sign it, then they have the option. Okay, then we'll move forward to ordinance 470, first reading, no action is required on this.
This is an ordinance of the City of Carrabelle, Florida, providing for an amendment of ordinance number 45, 445 of the City Land Use Regulations, providing for findings of fact, providing for changes in the permitted, conditional, or prohibited uses within the industrial zoning district, providing repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for separability, and establishing an effective date.
Okay. Would you just explain briefly?
Sure.
I know we know about it, the staff does, you do, and P and Z, but I had two people ask me at lunch today, what does this mean?
All right, we have, Courtney, 20 acres?
Yes.
20 acres, zoned industrial out close to the airport, what's commonly referred to as the export building, sits on five to seven acres of it, parking lot, and then the balance of the property, and we had recognized that it would make sense to allow, in that industrial category, it's really isolated to that property, the ability of owners in that property, which is actually only us right now, to allow for boat and RV storage on that property. And this is not, the commission has tasked P and Z with doing a bit of a broader, make a broader recommendation on boat storage and RV storage and that sort of thing throughout the city. This is a small part of that, but that, that is not this. This is specifically just that 20 acres to allow RV boat storage on that.
Okay, and then we'll take this up for action next month at our next meeting, okay? And then resolution number 05219, and action is needed on this resolution.
All right, resolution number 05-2019, a resolution of the Board of the City of Carrabelle, certifying its support for House Bill 0191, Northwest Florida Rural Inland Affective Counties Recovery Fund. Whereas City of Carrabelle is concerned about the economic health and wellbeing of our residents, and whereas we strongly believe we need to be proactive and not reactive, and we're going to maintain great employment opportunities benefiting our citizens while still supporting the quality of life in our community and region, and whereas enhancing the local infrastructure and workforce training will promote economic growth, competitiveness, improved quality of life amenities in our community and region, and whereas our community and region has endured the devastation of Hurricane Michael, is in the midst of a recovery, rebuilding process following said hurricane, and whereas we're in need of financial and political support programs to maintain and continue said recovery, rebuilding process for our community and region, and whereas we support this bill and its companion Senate bills to enhance our community and region's recovery and rebuilding processes, and whereas we commit to honor our obligations that lie within our capabilities as leaders for economic development, training, and enhancement of quality of life features that will serve our community and region. Now therefore be it resolved that this board does hereby resolve that we, number one, do hereby agree to support this action, number two, do hereby authorize our chair to execute this resolution and all other authorized agreements that pertain to this resolution, number three, this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption.
All right, thank you. I, I contacted the DDO representative and asked exactly what does this House bill read, because the resolution doesn't really give you any idea what the House bill reads, and the House bill says it creates Northwest Florida Rural Inland Affective Counties Recovery Fund within the Department of Economic Opportunity, requires certain payments to be appropriated annually to, to the fund. It requires the DDO to grant awards to organizations and local governments for specified infrastructure project and work programs. It requires the DDO to establish application procedure and prioritize projects and programs that meet certain requirements. It requires the DDO in consultation with specified entities to review and certify applicant, applications, and exempt certain funds from reversion. So this is, appears to be an ordinance for the DDO to grant monies to the inland rural counties that were affected by Hurricane Michael.
This was discussed at the meeting, the last EDC meeting that Courtney and I attended in Mariana, and it was, the statement was made in the County Commission meeting yesterday that this is not going to affect our county or our city, but it will our neighbors. So I make a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
And we have the by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, then, Mr. Hartman, resolution 06219.
All right, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a change in description to a joint participation agreement, FDOAT, project number 423905-4, with the Florida Department of Transportation, provide 100% grant funding from, construct security fence to purchase and installation of a security fence to include site prep survey and CEI. Whereas the City of Carrabelle needs 100% grant funding to construct a permanent fence surrounding the entirety of the Carrabelle Airport, whereas the City, where the Carrabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation, provide 100% of the funding for this needed project for the Carrabelle Thompson Airport. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carrabelle, Florida, assembling a regular meeting on March 7, 2019, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation is follows. Florida Department of Transportation, participation 100% for $453,750, City of Carrabelle participation 0% for $0. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the City of Carrabelle and Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed.
All right, so we'll try this again. May we entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Melander, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. All right, we'll move on to new business, item one, discussion of possible action regarding cleanup and regular maintenance of Patton Park. I requested this item. I'm receiving complaints from the public that the park is not being maintained, and I just want to go ahead and say upfront, I'm not upset with any staff member at all regarding job performance. This park is out of the way. It's basically been underutilized, unutilized for over the years that I've known about the park. It's mostly used to buy inmate crews for lunch and rest breaks out there. But, you know, we, we know we have a skeleton crew of two Streets and Roads members, and they're, they're holding their own. There's an outline management plan for that area that, how, how the city should maintain and manage the 52 acres. I'm sure Ms. Tamra is familiar with that, or, you know, you know that there's a management plan. For instance, there's certain landscape techniques that are supposed to be performed, and it's laid out in the plan just right, and there's educational signage that's supposed to be provided and maintained. And that's just, just a little bit, it's a thick manual for management. But at this point, and it has been since I've been involved with the city, that there's just not funding to follow that management plan as, as directed. The road's supposed to be maintained, and it is very well maintained right now, in excellent condition by Randy with the Water Department. The restaurant facility was rehabbed about three and a half years ago. I was out there a couple of weeks ago. It's in good condition still. It's being kept clean, so the Streets and Roads folks are doing a good job of keeping that clean, but the park itself is completely overgrown. Sidewalks and paths are basically inaccessible. The picnic pavilion is inaccessible. Trees were blown down here in Michael, a few trees. But Charlie has offered for Randy to contribute one hour of mowing to the park whenever he's out there mowing the water treatment plant. But I am understanding that the areas need to be bush hogged before they can be mowed. It's, it's overgrown. You know, I'm, I'm looking for suggestions on how we can keep the park grounds maintained, and that's why I've talked with Charlie about it, Courtney and I have, and if we're going to keep it open to the public, it needs to be kept in a safe condition. The DDO has allocated funding to hire workers to help with Hurricane Michael cleanup, and we actually talked with the Workforce Center in Appalachia last November, fall, about they would supply some workers over here and be, you know, it's possible the city could have these workers go out and, and maintain Patton Park. If they're assigned to a certain location, they can drive their car to that location if they're going to work the location for three or four days. The caveat is that they have to have a supervisor, but someone can go out there and check on them off and on during the day. And they cannot work with inmates, they can't use equipment like backhoes and tractors and such, and they must have a job description that demonstrates the work related to Hurricane Michael. That's just a suggestion. I need to forewarn you that there's gopher tortoise nests out there, an endangered plant species, and their management is outlined in the management plan. So we have suggestions on how we can keep this park open and safe for the public.
The park needs to bush hog, but then you just said there's endangered plants there. How are you going to bush hog it and not cut an endangered plant down?
I don't know.
The rid, the rid.
I know it, that's why Randy, he's not going to, he's not going to do that, so it's under control, then he'll.
Yeah, so, you know, one time Edmund would take the city platter with a bush hog, and Edmund's been gone five, six years now, so it ain't been done. When I was on Public Works, I know Edmund cut that, then they got some environmentalists that were complaining about just what you talked about, the turtles, the plants, so they just stopped. Well, six years, it screwed up, and what's it going to do?
And I, and I had mentioned it, that, you know, we've got an offer to, to get it mowed. Oh, no, 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 no. But then the same people are complaining.
We had heard too before, but the neighbors complained that the smoke was too thick.
Now, we could get it, I know there's trails in there back to the picnic tables, that could be cleaned.
Aren't those concrete, right? I mean, so, now, it's.
Most of them are.
Those could be cleaned and cut back, but there's some species, but they need to be cut back off the path anyway, the, the outlined concrete.
And we have a bear problem out there, too, when it was being used, when people came out to the picnic, so they leave their trash, and the bears would get in it at night, and that's a problem, too.
There's a bear proof tan out there now, at the pavilion.
That's, I haven't been out there in years.
Is anyone familiar with that big plan that you're talking about?
I don't know anything about any plants.
I'm serious.
Leslie, Leslie Cox.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant any of us.
Ms. Wesley.
Yeah, Leslie Cox.
Leslie is the one that spearheaded that activity earlier on. They got the plan together and did all that, and there's several times it's been worked on substantially. She actually, about a year ago, she got the Conservation Corps out there, and they, they devoted a whole day of volunteer work to taming the, you know, cutting it back and trying to get certain things done, but.
Well, there are allowable equipment uses out there, or there was, because I worked with Leslie Cox when I worked with St. Joe Company, and I put gyro tracks out there and did the mowing, and I mowed that 15 acres with gyro tracks. So there are areas out there that's in that plan, which I'm not familiar with, that can be mowed with mechanical means. And there's also primitive trails out there that's supposed to be maintained by hands. So that's the reason why I asked that question, because I think there is means for us to be able to utilize some equipment on part of it.
I've heard to go and tie ribbon around.
Yeah.
There you go. Plants, and we'll tie it down.
And the gopher holes, that's the main.
And most of it is supposed to hold up at the gopher hole. From what I understand, most of it's supposed to be kept protected, so a bush hog mowing once or twice a year should do it on most of the creeks.
But then, you know, we've, a bush hog mowing is going to cost you about $5,000.
No.
And they, they want the, the fire, you know, the boundaries, you know, all of that, cut, fire, fire breaks, cut.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, just the walking trails and not trying to get aggressively and do the other. I get, you mentioned that earlier, I don't know that we have the funds and the means to do all that.
No, and, and we don't, we never have, that's why it's not been done ever, and, but I don't know.
And burning is the best control of vegetation and the most cost-effective.
And it was burned just, what, three, two, two years ago?
Should be burned on two-year cycles.
I think it was last year, they were scheduling to burn, but then ended up in wildfires, and they didn't have time, because they have to do it when they have time.
That's right. But it should be, but to, to accomplish a goal, it should be done on two-year cycles.
But that's just the perimeter, right? I mean, it just burned the fire lanes. I, I signed a contract with the Forest Service a couple of years ago to burn some areas on the airport, and when I signed that, they said they weren't going to burn it anymore. They said that once they burn that, then it's up to the city to keep those areas maintained.
Yeah, that was with a mitigation crew, and once they do that, once the mitigation crew does that, then you're on your own.
So I don't know what is going on at Patton Park, or what kind of an agreement was signed for that to be burned, but, you know, it's brought, brought to your attention, it's overgrown, the bathrooms being well-maintained, the road is being well-maintained, you know, if we get complaints, we can say it's under, under discussion, understudied, we're trying to figure out how, how we're going to do it. And, and I want you to know that the Border Department, the Zoo Department have reached out to help.
I think that's good.
It is good, and I do appreciate it, and I appreciate the good job Randy's been doing to take care of that roadway.
You know, we need to have it bush hogged.
I think that's going to be identified in that plan.
You see, I, I'm not familiar with the plan, other than historically, you know, just, I mean, I don't know the details of the plan. I know that Carrabelle Cares has several hundred dollars in a fund that was donated in honor of Mr. Patton to help maintain the signage, should the city, I know we, Courtney and I talked about that over time, at the point that there needs to be some signage. They were just, they were trying to think of something to honor their friend, and so this high school class gave the donation that we're holding for the right thing to spend it on, but it's only a couple hundred dollars, so I don't think, you're not going to get your bush hogging done for a couple hundred bucks.
Would that signage also cover the truck, the gopher tortoise trails and the plants that are, that we want saved?
Well, I.
Do we have markers for those things?
I don't know. I, I've never found it to be a friendly place for me. I mean, as long as I'm on the concrete, I'd get along fine out there, but I, I can't, I don't know where to go for places are.
Have a tow truck get you out there.
Okay. Well, do we just, I believe they were marked, but a couple of got missed, and they.
I remember they ran over, they ran over a particular, oh. I remember they ran over, they ran over a particular, oh, gopher hole and gopher with the tractor, so...
This place is just gonna grow back to a forest if we don't do something.
Keep it maintained, and it's grown into a forest now, but...
Do we need to have the plants marked, the gopher hole?
I don't, I don't know. I, I'm really, I gotta say, Leslie's the team leader in the environmental stuff. And I informed her about the meeting, and she knew it was on the agenda, but I can't, I can't answer this. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the problem, but I don't really have the answers.
And that's, that's the way I am. I'm sympathetic to the problem.
Designate it as a wildlife refuge and leave it alone.
I don't think you can.
I don't know what his, what his plan consists of exactly.
It's grant money and you've got to stay...
I don't know what his plan consists of.
I think it was a grant.
Courtney, so say that then, Ms. Courtney.
I don't think you can. You have a plan that you have to follow, and they, they come out periodically and they do a site visit. And everything has to be, I mean, last time they were out there, it was fine. That's been a while. They come out and make sure the trails are marked, and you would have to go to the state and request some sort of change like that.
Do we need to start this process?
It's possible. Now, there was a fair amount of grant money. I think I saw them in the front.
It was different grants too. I think they had a wildflower grant, there was a wildflower grant, and I think they had an FCT grant. And then they had another sort of, like a Firdapp grant or something. They had several different funding sources.
Well, the one that, the one that requires that the management plan be maintained, maybe we should reach out to them and see if we can get some relief from it. Maybe temporary relief for five years or something till we can get a handle on it.
Another grant to pay for it all.
Yeah.
Why don't we ask forestry if they'll go burn it? Didn't you say they were going to last year?
The year before, it just...
Because burning, burning is an acceptable practice in all departments.
I agree with Tony.
That's true. And, and Ms., Ms. Leslie likes to control burn. She approves of it.
But it seems like it was kinda what you were saying, that they said, okay, we're gonna do it this time and...
Then they, they got in the, yeah, when wildfires broke out, they had to put it on the back burner, but it's kinda wet right now. Check, let's check the forestry and see if it burns.
It really needs to have like a friends of the park group.
And in the meantime, somehow we need to have that manual, and somebody within the city needs to know what our responsibilities are.
We've got the manual.
I would commend my role and we need to get started on it.
Yeah, we need to...
Well, I understand that. That's the reason why I said we needed to refresh ourselves.
It's just, I refresh myself, and I realize that it's a big manual, and it's another, it's a big, it's a big job. That's why I know that this, it's just like the streets and roads can't management, manage it, the administrative staff can't manage it either. I mean, it's just another mountain of, of work.
You have the manual?
I've got it on my computer.
Okay.
So Leslie sent it to me a couple, three years ago. This is what has to be done. And she was, so, all right. We'll, we'll find out if the Forest Service will burn it right now.
So we're thinking under advisement.
Yes. Okay. Take it under advisement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Thank you for your input, Ms. Tamper. We appreciate it. Thank you for letting Leslie know we were gonna discuss it. Old business, item one, discussion of possible action regarding decommission and disposition of old city hall. And I'm gonna ask the attorney, I know you communicated with the school board about the bus, the bleachers, and the mobile buildings. Have you heard back?
Yes, they said they were getting with their maintenance, no, nothing definitive. Said they were getting with their maintenance people and they would get it taken care of now. But I actually, I talked to Courtney, have the staff folks, have you heard of them?
I believe they've sold one of the buildings.
I don't know.
Somebody's come in, wanting to...
No, that's a different one.
That's not one over there.
That's already been gone.
Oh, that's by the spin. Their building.
Right. Well, one of them's...
They're all their building.
Yeah. The one that was on their properties, the one that was on their properties already gone.
That's correct.
No, I haven't heard anything from the school board on that.
The only thing that you and I heard when we were out there, Friday was week ago, was from one of the school board employees about the bleachers. He was getting those off of our section and moving them to their side.
I thought one of the stipulations when they did the auction for those buildings, that you had a certain amount of time, like sixty days or something, to get them out of there. So did they actually get a bid on the other two and that was, you know, don't know.
I don't know that they ever auctioned. The last communication was from their attorney on February twenty eighth, Dan, our facilities director is working on the list.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Courtney, tell us about, I know the building was secured and...
I know the commissioner, Juan, has been over there. Commissioner Melander and I have been over there. All the doors have been changed from the inside, all set for the one entrance. The power's been shut off at the breakers, the water's cut off, so it's been secured to the best that we can secure it at this point.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it. I appreciate all of that.
Then we bust out a door or a window.
Yes, I mean...
What deal with that?
Yeah, you've got it fixed now, where if something happens, someone's actually breaking.
Kids can't just walk in there. That's the main thing.
And, and all the power's cut off, right now the water...
That's the breaker, not the power.
That's good. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Road Street need to go in there and work. They can cut the lights on, clean the place.
And from what I understand, they've got quite a bit cleaned out this week.
Amazing.
They said most of the elementary signs, they've cleaned out back end rooms.
And I haven't been either, but I was gonna say, this could be a possible spot where we could use the DEO paid workers as well, if it seems like it. So you all, Ms. Miranda printed out a copy of the utility bill, the power bill from over there. Y'all saw that. It's in our paperwork.
I missed it.
It was one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, basically, from last year, from last month.
That, that's what we want to get.
I know it.
Building is, that money was gonna go to...
That's where I went over very quick.
But we discussed it, we had a special meeting, that because we had stuff that had to be moved out of there, we had to leave the power on so the crews could work, but we want to finish it as soon as possible. We don't want to continue paying a thousand dollars a month.
No.
Well, that was the idea of getting out of it.
And water.
Yes, water was two thousand dollars last month.
I'd like to ask the attorney if one of our liability, if anybody got over there who was injured on the property.
So what now, Commissioner Allen?
What kind of liability would we have, should somebody get on the property and get injured?
No different than when we were there as, as operating. And in this scenario, we probably, actually she posted no trespassing sign.
And the chief did suggest that post no trespassing, and he, he's, Courtney did with him, actually maybe asked him to do it, because they, for them to be effective and enforceable, they've got to be on all four corners and like every twenty feet or something. So they have to be posted in just a certain fashion to be effective.
I think we need to do that.
Yes, that's fine. Post them on the fence too. And they got the fence closed on the east side. That looks good. Thank you. I do appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to report that the Carabelle History Museum, we consolidated all our stuff that was in various spots into room one ten today with the help of the work crew. And everything we own is either in that, in that room, in one ten, or right out in front of it. There are a couple of display cases we can have room for. And then the other thing we have there is the trophy room, and we're working, I'm working with the, our, our football players commissioners to develop a plan, how we're gonna keep our trophies and honor them properly.
How many trophies are there?
A lot more than you would imagine.
They go back years and years and years.
We looked at them the other day.
I've never seen it, so I...
We don't want to lose us.
Okay.
Let me just say, if you put a ledge in this room, like a one-foot ledge, and it went all the way around this room, you could fill it up with trophies. So we've got a lot of, we've got a number of representatives.
How did we get these trophies?
We got these trophies because they were left here when the school, when the school...
They were in the display cases in the front office. Does the school want these trophies?
No. Well, actually...
I mean, they took what they wanted, but they left, like, state...
Carl Whaley, who spoke as a school board member, told me that he was anxious to get the school to have a combined trophy case with some trophies from the three major highs, you know, from, from Carabelle, Quinn, and Appalachia Cola. And bring some of those together at the new county school to do, just kinda show where we've come from. And I know that the city of Appalachia came and got all of the trophies that, they had as many as we have. And they were all, we sorted them out at great length. We had to go back and look at the yearbooks to figure out what year, which team won which trophy. Because it didn't have a name, it just had the year on it. But we got those sorted out, and we have a few of them, but we're gonna, we're gonna make one of those rails and, and put, I don't think we've got room for all of them, but I think we could definitely put up a good, the important ones. I think that's what we need to figure out is, you know, we have, we have them for cheerleading, we have them for football, we have them for track. And, but we have them for the more modern, the more modern things like banking and math and spelling and things like that, which in my day wasn't something people competed for, so I, you know.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, I'll go over there and take a look too, and we can...
If you have any ideas, let us know.
Think out of the box on this one. So I'm just, it's getting late, but I've got something I want to talk to you about real quick here. You know, at the twenty-sixth, our special meeting that we all had on the twenty-sixth here, we discussed the pros and cons of the, of demoing the building and keeping the property versus selling and possible rezoning to multi-housing. And I attended a housing initiative one day this past week here. And I, I learned that in the aftermath of Hurricane Michael, Triumph has expanded its grant requirements from being all just job-related driven, that you have to create jobs, to assisting these rural communities here with providing affordable workforce housing. I didn't say low-income housing or subsidized housing. I said affordable workforce housing for folks that are in the average income range of around forty thousand and up. Now, this is a possible opportunity for the city to apply for grant, for Triumph funding, a grant from Triumph. There's nine and a half acres over there. It's in a, in a nice rectangle square section. It's all squared off just nice. This nine and a half acres could be used as leverage, as a match to a Triumph application. We could, we could ask for money to demo the building, money to expand the infrastructure, water, sewer, and possibly some roadways. If you look at it on the property appraiser's site, you can see how all of the other land around it is platted, except for that school board land and the park that the city has, with flat out just perfect. We could possibly work with a developer to, to build some units, like the Sands condos. And these units, these prizing, pricing would be directed towards our, the educational field, the teachers, the medical field, the law enforcement. Make them a decent size, like the Sands condo, twelve hundred square feet, where you can have a small family in there. And the reason that these houses are, would be affordable is that the land cost component and the infrastructure cost component is removed. And that all that the person has to purchase is the actual building, the cost to the builder, materials, the labor, and the builder's markup for the builder's profit. So it helps to make houses affordable. We could certainly expand our tax base that way. We can expand our water and sewer accounts that way. And it's an appealing way and an attractive way to expand our affordable housing base here in the city of Carabelle and for the eastern Franklin County. So that's just a proposal I'm putting to you to think about, to use that property for leverage to get funded. Just something to think about.
I think it's a great idea.
But it's, it would be, it would have to, it would require some more.
Well, we have to...
Yeah, anything.
If we could give a grant to the Triumph, it's great.
Who owns the property when it's built out? The homeowner?
Now, and, and Mr. Hartman could probably help a little bit. He's a member of the Franklin County Land Trust. I don't know if this would be exactly like the land trust. We could certainly set it up the way we wanted to. The property owner could own the property now. In some land trust, I believe the value of the land stays with the land trust. But I don't know if we would want to have a land trust. But that's, that's a good question. And even Greg, when I talked to Greg about it, my ideas, he said, well, who, who owns the land? But the city could certainly donate the land.
The idea is good. I just, that's my big question, is who's who owns the property?
The person purchasing would certainly own the structure.
Correct.
But if we felt like we wanted to donate the land, well, we could certainly do that too. And that might be something that Triumph would like.
What happens with a Habitat for Humanity house? What does that have to do with it?
I have to go check, and I do know, because I've handled some of that.
Is it in their land? Donated to them?
Well, they, but they have, yeah, they have clawback. They get in it to get it back. There's various scenarios where things go haywire.
But once it's paid for, it stays.
Yeah. But there's still sometimes a reimbursement.
But they actually have an investment.
Yeah.
So, but you all know, we need to decide what's gonna, what's, what we're gonna do with this park.
We did. We did.
And does the, do the items that they're moving around in there, are they of some value? Are we gonna have an auction for that? I know we asked you to kinda give us an idea of what, what we do to put together an auction.
Let me, I think that we surplus it first. I don't know, before you surplus it, do you open it up for your nonprofits to get what they want? But then you surplus it and see what we can get rid of locally, and then have an auction on the rest of it.
Can't, can't we open it up to nonprofits, Mr. Hartman?
Can. Just like we, you know, we fund and we say, here's for an all competition tournament or whatever, but... Yeah, we can. I'm, I'm more thinking of the, legally, no problem. The practical issue of who do we let in first? Do we let, you know, we gotta be careful.
Take draws, draws.
Get an hour.
You know, I was saying, there's all shopping bags.
Take a shopping cart and you're giving them an hour.
When we, when we were walking around, I'm like, what are we gonna do with all these desks, school desks? And not, not like desks like they are sitting after rush, a classroom desk. What are we gonna do with all these desks? And then Miranda said, they called from the sheriff's department. They wanted to know if we had any desks, because they do a GED class and they wanted to go in the classroom. So there are people that want some of this stuff, that it could go to good use.
They're right here in our community.
What was that other organization that just... The one that did the donation side, where they had all that stuff, and now maybe four office chairs.
Oh, the last one's never in there though.
Oh, capital area, yes.
They did a good job.
They had all that furniture.
They're looking for all this furniture.
Four office chairs.
Well, I think they signed some agreement that it had to go somewhere.
I didn't actually see any in there.
Yeah, everything we had, the front office is still in there.
Y'all didn't follow what I was saying.
I got you.
Did Lee get in touch with you? She was wondering about those portable...
She was wondering about those portable air conditioning heating units y'all had?
We have all of those.
She, the city of Appalachia Cola, they out there in that old school, there's no heater, they're in the same shape out there as we were, as ours.
We can certainly, first, not just empathize, but sympathize if it's him.
But she.
Would we wanna try to sell those to them at a discount rate or something like that?
Well, they are. Surplus them and they bid on them, or?
And can we transfer them?
I mean, you, you, it's really up to the commission on, on loan, selling, donating.
I believe there's nine of them. I guess a lot. All right, well, it's not, uh, summer yet, let us think about it till next month. And maybe we'll keep one or two upstairs in case there's some kind of a, but I don't foresee any, you never know, you never know. I will say that the chief has told me that he needs a carport for his boat, that the sheriff's department gave him, and he needs a shed to keep his implements and his lost and found items, and.
Should have had them available.
I'm sorry to say that he didn't mention that till late in the game, like this week, so we need to find a place.
Yeah, I need a shed for my boat too. Mine got blown away.
Okay, all right, so, all right, well, now, you all, you're gonna see this, uh, city item, old city hall, come and go on the agenda until we figure out something.
Oh, it ain't gonna happen over there.
Yeah, and it may come up next time the Courtney's report, but then we'll put it back on and.
You know, we need the, a motion to request the grant from Triumph?
Uh, I think it's a little bit early to kinda do some research on it, uh, and see how to approach that. What we would have to do is get someone to write a two-page application and an executive summary, a two-page executive summary that's required to go with the application, and send that to them to see if they would accept that, that proposal like that.
It don't hurt that.
And we can, we can, uh, uh, check on that this month and, and bring it to you. Okay, all right, so we have a motion to, um.
I'll move to turn.
Okay.
I second.
That's Commissioner Allen, and seconded by Commissioner Mathis, is there any further discussion? All in favor, any opposed, okay, that motion carries, thank y'all gentlemen.